Welcome everybody to TANON meeting number 109, it's August 6th, 2024. And today we're joined by Ese, Darnabas, Kali, Daniel, Guillermo, Hogan, Ian, Onize, Vani. Thanks all for being here. As you can see on screen, while I admit clement from the waiting room, um relatively short agenda. We start off with a couple of mentions, then we have a little recap of ADN 24 by the Latam Guild. And then we'll have the Archives Workgroup presenting some research, Ubi did, on AI search tooling. If there is any time remaining after that, which might very well be the case, there's room for other topics. And, but, that's the outline for today. I'll start off with a quick recap on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that are aligned with the mission and vision of Singularity in its ecosystem, and that want to contribute to it. We have a wide range of self-organizing workgroups, and yeah, there's just a very broad range of topics. So, yeah, pretty much guaranteed that if you want to help out, we have a workgroup suited for that. Do jump, uh, jump onto our Discord server if you want to. You'll find a "How to get started" section there that explains everything. Hope to see you there. Then, a couple of quick mentions. Um, first one being, uh, the workgroup sync and call. Um, we intended on having this, uh, last week, uh, but the turnout was, uh, very low, unfortunately. So we figured to, um, properly announce it to every single body, um, that's supposed to be there. I'll do a round of DMs tomorrow. Um, this is at, uh, let me double check, I believe 10 UTC. Yes, 10 UTC. And then, uh, Friday at, uh, 14:30 UTC, there's the bi-weekly meta-study group. This is proper technical content, uh, but for those interested in that, it's, it's, yeah, very interesting. I also recommend, uh, connected to this, uh, checking out the, uh, Technical Tuesday that happens only just, uh, in the last hour. I think it concluded by now. Uh, that was all about, um, how, um, Meta allows, uh, scaling for OpenGrok Hyper Run. But there's also a bi-weekly study group that, that really dives deep into the subject matter. So it's not for the faint of heart, but, uh, definitely worth it if you're interested in that. And then, yeah, a quick call out on the, um, AGI 24, um, pre-event roundtable. Um, that's taking place tomorrow, uh, August 7th, at 4:30 UTC. As you can see on screen, uh, I'll call them ahead. It's moderated by David Wood, and participants are Ben Gertzel, Anadlu Smithman, Elizabeth Shaw, Gabriel Exa Montes, Scott David, and Trent McConaughey. Um, we'll just give you a little taste of what's to come during the AGI 24 conference, which is, um, August 13th till 16th, so next week, basically. Pretty much all of next week, actually. Um, hmm, I think I might squish in a little color there, actually, from the AI Ethics Workgroup. How are we doing on, um, is there still a need for, for people to, um, sign themselves up or show?
Not really, no. We've kind of got all the roles that we need, but I just want to call out for tomorrow, what you're showing there on the screen tomorrow. I've just put a link in the chat to the YouTube livestream, but then after, it's going to be about 90 minutes, and then after that, we hop into a Zoom call with some ambassador program-led breakout rooms. There's one from Guillermo and Co., um, um, starting from Latam. There's another one from Jen in the AI Ethics Group about indigenous perspectives on AI, which is going to be amazing. And Colleen is doing another one on the issue of personification and anthropomorphization and the ethics thereof. So yeah, don't miss it. And the Zoom will be shared at the end of the livestream, so that's how you get in.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, looking forward to that. Slightly makes me wonder how the, if the R&amp;D Guild is taking place, if Guillermo is hosting a breakout room, but, um, maybe you could shine a light on that? Is it just taking place as, as scheduled? On R&amp;D side?
Hi, everyone. Uh, yes, as we are, uh, autonomous body, we will have Kisi, uh, and, uh, R&amp;D members leading the, the meeting tomorrow. Um, so hi, everyone. Um, yeah, that, that thing clarified. Um, it's just a, a small question before going on on, on the, yeah, telling everybody how excited we were on the ADN event. Uh, the workgroup's meeting will be on Thursday, you said?
Yes, at 10 UTC.
Okay, so we're just started. So first thing first, uh, thank you for the, uh, to the Foundation and the Ambassador Program, uh, to, for this experience. Um, that later on, we will share with everyone. We collected a lot of content. We did, uh, a lot of interviews, uh, in the video format. We, uh, onboarded a lot of potential new members for this program. We have, uh, Latam Ambassador Guild. Um, but mostly, we were very excited to see, uh, our country, Argentina, uh, being the center of this amazing discussion of, uh, turning, uh, our, yeah, community into a concrete use case for blockchain and AI. Um, it was great that you, like, it happened to us, the Ambassadors on the BGI 24 in Panama. We finally meet a lot of people. We have been working for the last two years or more, uh, you know, uh, behind the screens. So it was a great time to hug a lot of people. Um, we have, uh, also flying from Brazil, Maria, um, and, um, Octavio, big members of, uh, Arano Community, also part of the SNET, uh, Latam Guild. Um, and, um, well, so, the other thing that it was, uh, pretty quiet, not surprised, that most of the panels, the experts, that they went over blockchain and utilities and case studies. We dive into AI. All of them, they were talking about AI. So, uh, when I have a chance to reach and talk a little bit with, uh, Charles, uh, we not only mentioned him, the great timing, but also that he will have to come back to Buenos Aires, because we're gonna go invite Ben next year and have a big event about AI. Uh, because, uh, yeah, when, when you have, uh, free ideas legislated by, by, yeah, but people without fear, there is a place for using this technology to really change the surround. Uh, and that's what is happening down here in Argentina. Um, and, um, we have, uh, there were government panels, they all talked about AI. Um, there were education panels, they all talked about AI. I was visualizing Sofia verse, you know, this, talking Spanish, you know, with curly brown hair on all the universities and schools around Argentina. Um, reaching people on their phones, on their, on their laptops, on their, on their classrooms. Um, there was an, another conversation and panel of experts talking about health, and it was with UAI all around, you know, uh, so, not only happy to represent us in the AI network, also to understand that the innovation, that, that, the level of innovation that is coming out from this, uh, ecosystem is quite outstanding. This, uh, it is, um, it really feels like, uh, not only disruptive, it's like, uh, avant-garde, like, uh, it is, uh, so there is, it's quite amazing, um, to have all this discussion. Yeah, what will be the avant-garde, vanguardia? Uh, yeah, it feels like, uh, Jimi Hendrix on the 60s, so we are there. Um, and, um, so yeah, and then the other thing that was, that came out of all the, we prepared five questions that we, we onboarded a lot of members, participants, and attendees of this event. And 65% of them, they will vote an AGI profession in Argentina. What's also funny, we are editing these videos, um, so we went and spiked things up with a quite, uh, uh, not comfortable question to, to people around. Um, and, yeah, it was not a surprise also to have politicians talk about politics the same way, like politics too, all around. And not funny enough, they don't even understand how they would do, or probably she, her, our AGI, our Singularity will help them to, to, to understand that. Um, what else? So yeah, so we will be updating everyone, so Inez is writing a blog in, uh, Spanish and English. I think she already did share on the Latam X account, and we're gonna be starting to post and share the videos that we did with these interviews, probably we'll go through them. And, uh, we wanna also, I also like to have this opportunity to thank, uh, not only Maria, but also Martin from the Latam Guild, that did an amazing job, all these new contributors, Spanish-speaking contributors to, uh, to the program. Um, and probably it's a good time also to give a, a small update. As I, last week I wasn't present. Yesterday, we have our first workshop, we have, uh, project management, um, where we are educating all the core contributors for the Guild with what we have learned from Vani, um, Ese, Supre, Andre, and all the, the all-time core contributors, uh, how to start this Guild properly, using the good practices from the Ambassador. Yeah, and then again, thank you for, for, for Foundation and the program to, for, uh, yeah, it was an honor to represent. Uh, I think, yeah, I will be, thank you.
Thank you, great stuff. Yeah, on a digital nation, uh, event, everybody has to talk all the time about artificial intelligence, of course. Oh, really looking forward. I, I do see the, the Spanish blog is indeed published. I'm gonna wait for the English one, not gonna lie there.
I think it's on the bottom, you know, we, we use one template. If you scroll down, you will have the English version. Um, and then we're gonna do like a video retrospective, uh, so we are already working on that. Um, there was no sheet of paper in the whole event, everything was digital. And we onboarded a lot of people to our Telegram, we're using QRs. And then we'll push all that into, into our Discord server. Uh, but first, education and, um, to scale up properly. But again, it was an honor to represent the, the Ambassadors, and we have a, we, we thought of you, uh, we met a lot of friends from Vani, from, from Andre, all these Cardanians were present, so, you know, it's a, it's a, uh, friend family, so it was a great reunion. Yeah, we really enjoyed it.
Great stuff. All right, um, any questions on this or comments from the room? It was quite a clear story, but feel free to latch on if you want to. All right, looking forward to read up on the, on the blog and the coming videos. Cool. Um, then next on the agenda, um, we've got, I think, Ese to present, uh, research done by Ubi for the Archives Workgroup on AI search tooling. Um, right, you can. The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll join the presentation, um, from the Archives as well group on, um, Ubi's AI search tooling for, archives, for archiving. Right, so, uh, let me just get right into it. So before I go like into the presentation by bringing, um, updates and, um, whatnot, um, first, uh, I want us to understand what the project is all about, because, um, some of us, um, don't really join the Archives workgroup meetings, so you might not be acquainted with what this feature, research and what this AI tool is all about. Um, so Ubi has broken with the Archives workgroup to develop AI tooling that can help us search and analyze archival content. So his research explores how effectively can AI categorize and tag archival content? How well can AI per- perform sentiment analysis and give insights into, and gives insight into the emotional tone of meetings? And, um, what can differentiate LLMs? What's, what's different LLMs can be used for? What's can different LLMs be used, uh, useful in an archives context? Um, so I'll just like move right into it. So one, the AI tag application. So the, um, Ubi has researched how well AI tools can apply human-defined tags to archival content to facilitate navigation and search. So we used human-defined tags partly to maintain the idea that ethically archival content, the tags that become actual part of the corpus, should be hu- should be human-created, partly because humans have the expertise and contextual understanding to ensure tags are accurate and relevant. And partly so that we are only changing one variable at a time, and can identify where any errors are stemming from. So, um, some of the tools that, um, was used for AI tag application was Google Collab for building and testing the tools, libraries for data processing and machine learning. And, um, so the AI tag process, so these are the process that was involved, you know? So be, um, Ubi had to do data collection. So tags are meeting notes resourced from the Singularity Net Archives GitHub repository. Model training, so the AI model was trained to understand existing tags and the application to meeting notes, then tagging itself. The trained model applied tags to new meeting summaries based on the learned patterns. And then evaluation, the accuracy of AI applied tags is evaluated by comparing them with original human applied tags. So example, um, testing example. Emitting summary is imputed into the tool, and AI applies tags such as governance, so action items based on its analysis of the text, texting process. Install necessary libraries, load the data set into the tool, input meeting notes, and let it to apply tags. Verify the tags applied by the AI against the original human applied tags to check accuracy. So this is like an example of how you can use the AI tag application, and this is the process that the AI tool is going to follow when it's being used. So the outcome, which, um, you should get when you try using it, is the process is deemed successful if the AI applied tags closely match the human applied tags. The process was reasonably successful. This demonstrates AI's capability to understand and replicate human tag application, demonstrating its potential to be used to improve navigation and searching of archival content. So now we'll move into the sentiment analysis. Um, so Ubi's sentiment analysis work has experimented with how far AI can identify emotional tone from quite limited information, such as we see in most archival content. So far, this work has been an initial scoping exercise. Long, longer-term work might move beyond simple polarity and scoring, using linguistic analysis to determine sentiment and provide reasoning for it. So the tools that, um, was used for the sentiment analysis included OpenAI Model for Sentiment Analysis, Google Collab for implementation and testing, and then the process that was, that was taken. I hope I'm not too fast. So, um, the sentiment analysis, so the process that, that we used was, that was used was, um, install necessary dependencies, use prompt engineering with reasoning and sentiment variables, input statements or meeting notes for analysis. The model generates sentiment and provides reasoning for the sentiment assessment. So, um, here's example and testing of it. So example, meeting notes from an R&amp;D Guild meeting were uploaded to the model. It assessed the sentiment as neutral and explained the reason as the meeting was focused on the tags at hand. However, a human analyzer would have been able to identify some sentiment in the summary testing process. Input statements or meeting notes. The model analyzes and generates sentiments with reasoning. Outcomes are verified for correctness and clarity. So, um, the outcome, this is a, so there's a demo video, yeah, this was where I was. So our sentiment analysis work demonstrates that we can use AI to generate limited sentiment assessments plus accurate reasoning. So when you go through the archive, um, through the, um, demo, you get to understand, um, how we came about this, um, ideology over here. But it only works if the content is tagged to support it. And so far, only with basic positive, negative, neutral sentiment assessments. So this process cannot yet do much by itself to enhance our understanding of the emotional tone of archival content, however. Or future, so however, what, what might, might, um, what might, what my need is to have, like, um, the further developments might include more sophisticated analysis. For example, using more complex emotion detection, rather than just positive, negative, neutral. So if you run, uh, a sentiment analysis on any, um, summary, it just gives you positive, negative, neutral. So in case if you are wondering what negative, positive, neutral means. Um, using more fine-grained analysis, speaker by speaker, item by item, that was right. And opinion mining to identify specific comments in a summary that offer insights into people's subjective impressions. Weight scoring for, weighted scoring for words in the sentiment lexicon based on detecting the importance of a word in the context. So use cases for different LLMs. Um, Ubi has also researched possible use cases for different LLM models. This is a CSV of the report of this research in the GitHub. Go over it and see, um, what possible use cases for different LLM models, you know? So what's our future work? Um, the future work we archives may include future exploration of AI sentiment analysis, testing the effectiveness of different LLMs on meeting summary data, developing dashboards to provide statistical insights, trends and visualizations derived from archives data. And thanks, that's about it. Uh, if you have any questions, you can go ahead and ask, and, um, we'd be glad to give a response. Thank you. I'll start sharing my screen now.
Thanks a lot, Ese, well done.
Thank you.
Um, I do have a question, but let's, let's turn it to the room, anybody? No need to raise hands, just feel free to unmute. And if not, I'll, I'll, I'll take one. Uh, uh, it made me wonder, um, like, is there anything, um, we can do right now? Um, during the writing of, of the meeting summaries to make it maybe easier? Or, or, yeah, I'm not sure if making it easier is, is the right way of describing it, but would there be something we can do?
Tag, 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 that's what you can do. And yeah, um, just be a little bit inventive and think about your emotion tags, um, and your topic tags. And yeah, that's always gonna help.
Yeah, fair enough, fair. Thanks.
I can't remember what was decided.
Go for it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, I was wondering if, um, it was decided, because I can't remember about how we're going to be referred to by the LLM as far as, uh, Discord names? Um, is it gonna be like, my name has a bunch of numbers after it? Is the, is the, uh, LLM gonna have to say the numbers every time?
Uh, if, if I'm answering your question correctly, I think when we had, um, I did a presentation on tax taxonomy, and we came to the conclusion that, um, we would use Discord names on the archives. So if the model is going to be working with, um, the information from the summary tool, then yeah, it should be using your Discord name, because that's what it will recognize. And that's what, um, the summary tool is being built to actually work with. I don't know if I answered that correctly, Vani, but I think that was what was concluded.
Okay, so then it's the actual Discord name of like my account, not what's like just printed on my, on my user profile.
Yeah, yeah, Discord account. It's because, um, we came to that conclusion because of, um, people usually wants that, um, for, um, you know, blockchain privacy and stuff like that. So for inclusivity and to ensure that everyone feels very comfortable, we Discord username, yeah.
Right, are we going to refer to each other then the same way, so the LLM will understand for the summaries?
I don't think I got that question.
I'm sorry, let me repeat it. Um, are we going to have to refer to each other in the same way of the actual Discord name? So that the LLM will know who is who during the summary?
Yeah, 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 definitely. I, I think most of the summaries that have been put in is actually taking up that, um, that, uh, actions from the last, um, presentation we had. So most people input people's, um, Discord name instead of their real names, so yeah.
Wow, so I'm gonna be calling 54962 underscore something, wow.
Yeah, we're, we're still building, we're still working on the model, so you can, um, update it and let us know. And you can reach out to whoever to update it. So if you don't want that long number, it's it's.
Yeah, I think it might be hard for other people, is what I feel sorry for. So maybe I'll have to, and try to address that at a later time. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I saw before.
Hello, Ese.
Let's go for it.
Yeah, good evening, guys. Um, can you hear me, guys? Sorry, I'm kind of on the road. So Ese, great job there. Um, it's nice. I, I think what, what, what really drew me, um, my interest was the, the approach to the emotional, uh, sentiment analysis that the LLM used. And I mean, it's great. I, I just wanted to say that, that the part of the testing where you, you used, um, probably, I think, one meeting note from the, um, R&amp;D Guild, you know, to maybe, um, test the LLM. Um, was that the only, um, um, test material? Or do you think it would have been a lot more useful that we've, we had maybe like other meeting notes? Um, for the testing, because probably other meeting notes would have had maybe like other emotional, you know, representations for the LLM to be able to detect. Um, secondly, is it possible to, in the infrastructure, the framework of the LLM? Oh, okay, 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 okay. All right, um, thank you, Vani. So I just wanted to find out, um, in the structure of the LLM, is it possible? So I just wanted to find out, um in the structure of the LLM, is it possible that we could um sample an area of ev- every available emotion um outside maybe just meetings, right? Or or maybe like regular human interactions and stuff like that, so that um it could maybe like provide a lot more um range of emotions for the LLMs to detect moving forward, so it's not just limited to meetings, maybe like normal emotions expressing regular interactions. Yeah, I'm done, Esse, I'm done.
Okay, but I don't think I got your question, maybe if you can call me again.
Okay, so yeah, I would say that um for the LLM structure itself, is it possible that we could maybe like um sample maybe like sentiment points from other interactions, like general emotional um interactions, would I be in meeting settings or in regular one-on-one human interaction and stuff like that? I'm just suggesting, maybe stuff like that would help further refine um sentiment analysis of the LLM.
Oh, okay, um so the video is just, this presentation I did right now is just like an example, so Ubio had like, according to Barney already responded to that, I had a look with lots of the corpus, but I'll also give like a feedback to know if it's possible, we can do like a one-on-one. But I think, and then we'll get back to everyone.
I mean, that certainly would be interesting, Clement, but um I'm just thinking, we don't often meet other than in meetings. And if we were gonna do that, like with a one-to-one, you'd have to document it and end up with a transcript of it, because what Ubio is working with, it primarily works with text. So I guess we'd have to, we'd have to transcribe some of our private conversations and maybe anonymize them, I don't know if there would be ethics issues. I I don't know what you talk about when you meet somebody privately, but yeah, it it would raise some questions, but it would definitely worth trying.
Yeah, thank you, Barney, I thank you, I think you get it.
Alright, um so Fred, I see you're muted, I'm not sure if you're lined up with a question there, or feel free to, if you are, or anybody else. Alright, I think that's um, well, uh thanks again, Esse, and and uh Ubio as well, of course. Good stuff. Um looking at the clock, we've got about sixteen more minutes on the slot. Agenda-wise, we're um kind of through uh the content for today, so I'd happily open up for uh open topics, any any questions, any things you feel we should be touching on during this down hall? Do speak up, because we can. We don't have to fill the slots, so um maybe we can save ourselves um fifteen minutes each, which in total is like five hours, so not the worst. I do want to uh do a quick call out for um upcoming Thursday, there's a open governance um session. And during today's uh governance session, we tried and figure out the the schedule, uh the dates for the Q4 budget um submissions. Uh that was harder than it uh turned out harder than it it looked to be, uh because at the end of the one-hour slot, we did not conclude with a finalized um schedule. There's a bit of summer holidays stuff, and we were kind of like, we we want to have the potential three iterations um concluded before the start of the quarter. But also because of the summer holidays, we don't want to start uh putting deadlines too early into September for this. So that's a bit of a balancing act, and we'll try and juggle with it a little bit more uh during uh Thursday's open governance um for group session, that's at fourteen UTC. So if you have any um uh interest in in puzzling that out, um you definitely can. Yeah, Vanessa, that that could be an alternative approach, just put all the deadlines next week, then for sure, they'll be in time. We can have seven runs, uh seven iterations on consent before time runs out, perfect. I don't read your old caps, I am kidding, uh come on there, sorry. Alright, uh no, getting excited, it's a bit of a puzzle, but uh we'll get it, and I think that's all for now. So yeah, without anybody interrupting or raising hands, um that's gonna wrap it up for today. Thanks all for being here and sharing your time with us. And
Thanks for hosting here.
You're more than welcome, and hope to see you on one of the many upcoming community calls. And if not, we'll talk on this, right? Thanks all.